Team meeting, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. A motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Jim, is there a second?
I'll second it.
By Lou, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries. I don't, under communications, I will let you know, and maybe under Ralph's report later, the traffic certificate should be issued for the Route 17 park very soon. We received the general recommendation and the traffic investigation report, and it has been recorded and by the town clerk on October 15th, and it will be, hopefully, we will receive a certificate very soon. I do not, we do not have a recording secretary tonight, so I need to keep up a comment.
Oh, there's no recording. Okay, yeah, I'm up here, I just wanted to address the, our driveway or the Kelly situation. There was a letter sent out last week from the zoning officer to inform you that the town is now satisfied with the remediation of that driveway on One Rose Hill. The current driveway, state of the driveway is now in compliance with the case and a cease, desist, and, desist order issued on July 9th, 2013. Should there be any additional questions or information needed regarding this property, please don't hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Dan Barrett. So I just wanted to come up here and protest this, this letter. We've been coming up here all summer talking about this, it's very tiresome, but we've gotten no resolve or from Ms. Bransfield. And, you know, going back to the summer, you know, talking about the Ethics Committee to take a look at it, and nothing was done with that, what's his name, George Law, who was representing Kelly, who sued the town, yet he still stands there on the Ethics Committee. So it's pretty much anarchy when we're dealing with this, and it, you know, relates back to what Melissa talked about a lot of times, about the uneven enforcement. And, you know, this letter is really a slap in the face, since I was up here some time ago saying that Kelly had redirected the water to a different part of the property, so just as much water is now threatening our house. And, you know, that wasn't even examined, and we're getting no engagement from Ms. Bransfield, or whoever the selectman is, maybe even Kerry Olson, like a co-selectman, there's many people involved with this. So I'm trying to find out how we can address or not have this go through, because there's still problems up there. And in fact, you know, when this case went through in 2000, I think it was in 2013, Ms. Bransfield stated that all parties must be notified and agreed on, on the resolution. That did not occur. Melissa was a litigant on that lawsuit, and she was never advised that they were going to keep the 200 feet of that driveway. And we have no idea why they kept it, what was the reasoning? You know, Kelly asked for it, you know, we're completely unadvised on that. So I don't know why Ms. Bransfield's saying this in the newspaper, it's a bold-faced lie, because we've been in the dark on, throughout the most of the time, and it shows an incredible lack of leadership, and in many areas, other areas of town governance. For instance, this Mr. Dan Barrett, a zoning enforcement officer, this was going on for, I don't know how many, how long, never even heard of this guy, never even talked to us once, and then he sends this letter saying, okay, we're going to try to get this through. I sent the letter back, I CC'd, I don't know if any of you received it, but this, we're trying to see if we can get a next step on this, and I don't know how to go about doing that, if we, open to any ideas. But anyway, so I did write back, I asked Mr. Barrett to contact me, I haven't heard anything. I said I had questions and concerns, I don't know why he sent it, if he didn't answer, it seemed like he was just trying to appease Kerry Olson. So 200 feet of that driveway still remains, we have no idea why it still does. Melissa was not involved with that at all. We have no validation if they filled in the drainage ditch back there, planted grass, that doesn't mean it's filled in, it's leveled off. And that water that comes down the right side of the house now is just as great as what was coming down behind our house, and we can't stand for that. Something's got to be done about it, it's going to ruin our property. And I don't understand why they would send this letter without looking at the property closely, a walk-through, which I requested, and I haven't heard anything back. So I am in protest and disagreement and disapprove of that compliance letter, and I am requesting further work up there and a walk-through to make sure that it complies. And it's a fallacy here in the first place, saying that it complies with the site plans, or however he worded it. Policy was simple, he just returned it to gravel, and due to lack of leadership, it got overcomplicated, trying to appease, all they had to do was, Kelly lost the case. He sued the town, the town's ethnic chairman represented him, and then they tried to appease him through the whole time. So it got overcomplicated, they're still trying to accommodate him along the way, he made the situation worse, and it still has to be addressed. And, you know, I thank you for your time for listening to this over and over again, but if it was your house, and it was under threat, property damage, and you were treated this way, you'd be up here, probably would be, you know, doing the same thing or even worse, who knows? But I would ask that, you know, any assistance, because Sue Bransfield, she does not, doesn't even look like she's listening or paying attention.
Mr. Sataj, I'm taking the minutes.
You're taking, taking the minutes?
Yes.
Oh, you're writing this down?
And we have the town engineer, and the selectmen are aware of this, the town engineer did an inspection, and, and reported back, and I shared that with the selectmen, is that correct?
That's correct.
Just want to make sure that we do have it.
Yeah. Jacobson.
Yes.
Well, how did he?
Mr. Barrett was responding to the fact that there was a cease and desist, and I believe I shared that with the selectmen as well, and I shared it with you, Mr. Sataj.
Right. The cease and desist was to turn, return to 100% that driveway to?
In regard to what the engineer reported.
Well, how, why wasn't Melissa apprised of that? What did it say? What, how did they come up with the fact that it was a better idea to leave that 200 feet of driveway there?
I'm not an engineer, and this was from the town engineer.
Well, didn't you see the report? I mean, that's what I mean, how do we know? We have no validation, we have no validation that?
I'll share it with you. If anyone wants it, they can have it, it's a, it's a public document.
Okay.
And I believe I shared it with all of the selectmen.
I mean, you can share all you want.
Do you have it?
That's, that's very, yeah.
I just wanted to be sure.
Share, share away, but let me share with you about that water coming down the right side. Why didn't the engineer share that with you? That's a big problem, that's the worst part of the problem. You know, what type of parameters did he use to say that, that driveway needed to be there? For all we know, Kelly could have said, I need that because I can't get up my driveway in the wintertime if it's not there. What proof do you have? Sharing, let me see the report. Why didn't Melissa see the report? She wasn't invited and prized.
The agreement, the selectmen know this, I'm not saying anything they don't already know.
Well, I'm saying something they don't know. They don't know about that water that's coming down the right side of the house.
And there was agreement by Mrs. Hoy, and agreement with Mr. Kelly, then all the parties had to agree.
And that didn't happen?
We reached a point where the parties did not agree. There was an offer made, and there was a, a change that was going to be made in regard to the property behind you, on Mr. Kelly's property. There was an offer also for Mrs. Hoy, and that was rejected, and there was an agreement that Mr. Kelly would proceed with what the town engineer determined would be appropriate resolution of the cease and desist that occurred.
Okay, the cease and desist was to, to return the driveway to its original state. Why would, why would you have to, you haven't have offers declined in the first place?
So.
But, besides that, there's a new problem because of lack of oversight, because of not holding Kelly accountable, and that has to be addressed?
I want to also point out that the selectmen received all of this information, and there was general agreement that once the engineer made the determination that things had been resolved, that the case would be closed, and that was happened, that has happened.
No, that's not going to happen.
Okay.
Right, because you, yeah, same to you, they, you ignored.
I just wanted to drink this.
The, body language. I was up here earlier at a town meeting, saying that there was water coming down the right side of the house, and that was, it's a matter of public record, and it was not addressed, and it continues to be a problem, and it needs to be addressed.
Thank you. I will also state that the selectmen have been apprised of everything.
That they weren't, they weren't apprised of this?
Yes, they have. Were there any other public comments tonight?
I do. And I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I don't trip on the floor.
Yeah, don't trip on the floor.
I have that too.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I can't get a minute to pitch.
Okay. So, instead of standing up here, I thought I'd mix things up a little bit, and we talked about the emails that have gone back and forth, we've stood up here, we've brought things to the, the selectmen's attention. I'm going to move this, there's like a squelch, can you still hear me, okay? All right. So what I did, as I said, you know, there's a lot of inconsistencies, I've said this before, and I thought, you know what, I'm going to show it in writing, not from Melissa's hands, but from what was actually in the paper. So, let's take a little stroll down memory, memory lane if we could, and you're going to notice that the first one is from October 14th of 2016, and it's when the judge upheld the cease and desist order on the driveway. And I'd like to bring your attention to the areas that I have in boxes, because it's really interesting.
Good evening, it's 7:45, the library is being closed in 15 minutes. If you have any items to check out, please press them to the front desk now, and the computers will be shutting down in 15 minutes. Thank you.
Okay. So what I wanted to do is bring your attention to the items that I've put little boxes around, because that's where I've commented on. So what you'll notice is, in the second column at the bottom, there is, I would like to ask you to consider this, if you're not going to hold property owners to the town, like all of a sudden I can't read, if you're, if you're not going to hold property owners to the town, in this town, to the development plan, yada, yada, yada. Well anyways, what it comes down to is, if that was said during the zoning enforcement meeting, why wasn't it a consistent message throughout? Right? So it was very consistent during the zoning enforcement meetings, but then once it came down to brass tacks, it was, they weren't held to it. The ZEO members during that meeting, it was really interesting, because I was surprised at how people came forward and disclosed their relationships, or not, not really relationships, but their dealings, that they had worked with Kelly or whatever, and I thought that was really interesting, yet the attorney, representing Kelly, who is the Code of Ethics and Conduct Chairman, didn't disclose that. And it's like, mm, okay, that's weird. The selectmen mentions, if you'll go over to the very last column, you'll see where I've got it boxed, that all the parties, let me see, Bransfield emphasized Olson had advised the town that any solution to the driveway problems would have to be agreed upon by all parties.
That's true, if there was a solution to be reached whereby the driveway would be intact with asphalt, that's correct. And the article doesn't go into that detail, but the agreement, and you and others sat in the meeting with us, and we all said that if Mr. Kelly and the, the property that you and your husband own, and Mrs. Hoy all agreed, that there would be the driveway remaining if all parties agreed.
Correct. And then what would happen?
And I will repeat again, all parties did not agree.
And then, but what was, what was supposed to happen? What was supposed to happen? If all parties didn't agree, what was supposed to happen?
Then the engineer would go?
No, 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 that wasn't what? Then the cease and desist would stay in, and the driveway would be returned to its natural state. So, we'll go ahead and go on. So, then an interesting comment is made about, what I'm unclear of is the role of the ZBA, but she would keep all of them informed, and then the town's current zoning enforcement would be kept in the loop. In the loop, the zoning enforcement officer would be kept in the loop. Well, isn't that nice? If he is mentioned as being kept in the loop because he's part-time, then it's funny, because he played a real integral part on the O'Keefe case. So if you'd like to turn to the next page? Now I know this is pending litigation, so I'm not going to dive too deep into it.
That's correct.
But, that's okay. If it's in the paper, you don't have to, I'm going just what's right in here, not asking for anyone's input, what I'm doing is bringing this to everyone's attention. I love transparency, I think it's very important to good communication and a healthy relationship. Um, let's see. The, the ZEO's roles, because he works one afternoon and then one morning, again, why is he engaged with this case? And this is rhetorical, not looking for an answer. Why is he engaged in this instance and not another instance? Again, what is that show? Lack of consistency. The town's attorney requested an injunction on this property, but on another property with a zoning issue, it was never done. So why do we have a cease and desist if it's not acted upon or filed with the courts? Why is the, why is the, a town attorney and the selectwoman holding this one, this one property owner at a different standard than another?
I will repeat that Kelly driveway case?
That's rhetorical.
Kelly driveway case?
Never asked for, never asked for input, but thank you.
The two neighbors and Mr. Kelly were to reach an agreement, and it never happened.
And again, my question was rhetorical.
Why do you keep?
So I'm curious as to what are the mitigating circumstances between these two instances? I've been reminded more than once that there is no back and forth, and I have learned to respect that, so that's why I wanted to do the handout, so it keeps me going in the right direction. So, now we move on to page three. You're going to notice that there's a box in area, and again, where the town's attorney says municipalities must have the right to ask a court to force a defendant to stop a certain behavior regardless of the avenues for appeal or alternative solutions that may be available, yada, yada, yada. Which I found was really interesting, because it makes it sound like, you know what, we're really strict, we're early on top of these things, but it's really not true, because again, it's an inconsistency. And if you look below, you're going to see a box, and you'll notice that I found some minutes of the meeting from a Cheshire zoning board of appeals meeting, and it's an old one, but I thought it was interesting, because our town's attorney was giving, like, direction on how to do things, and how, how it looks to me, when I read it, and maybe it's just me, but it looked like they were trying to give some guidance for consistency, and where a standard is set. And again, I asked the question, why are we any different? Why wouldn't we do things, if it's been discussed in another town by our town's attorney, then why wouldn't that same thing happen here? So if you'll go ahead and go to page four. On page four, this is regarding the Rocky situation. What jumped out at me was what I was, again, put in a block, and I apologize, I can't pronounce the, Peruccio, Peruccio, told the River East earlier this month that she felt a lot of pressure, quote unquote, from town legal counsel and the selectwoman to issue, issue a disposal order instead of a restraint order. Well, wait a second, if she's feeling a lot of pressure, why would, that doesn't sound right to me. That's concerning to me, when a town employee feels, when they say on the record, in the press, that they feel pressured, that makes me nervous, because we've heard this out of, we've heard this from town hall employees before, and that's concerning. So why, why is the town's attorney and the first selectwoman, I, I don't understand?
This, this item is also still not fully evolved.
This is a rhetorical question, and I'm not looking for back and forth.
So you are making statements that I will not respond to, but for the record.
I didn't ask you to.
And for the selectmen, I'm for the audience.
But thank you very much. I thought we weren't supposed to have back and forth. I'm very confused.
I am saying that you are making a lot of allegations.
And I put them in writing too, because I'm so comfortable about it. So if we could go on to page five, you'll notice that we have in the last column, you'll see the box, about how much we've spent. That's a lot of money. And that's all I got to say about that one. If we go up to pa, or go to page six, you'll see the box, the attorney said the statutes leave it up to animal control officers to hold dogs in pounds and issue disposal orders with no adequate rules. The attorney that's referenced is Attorney Page, and I thought it was interesting, because if it's up to animal, if it's up to animal control, then again, why are we, why is town hall, why is there someone in town hall and the town's attorney? I think the question needs to be asked. On page seven, we have another dog issue, and this one happened almost a year later. The Rocky issue, I believe, happened in January?
You're talking about Mr. Barrows?
Yes, that's the first name that shows up. And, let's see, you'll see in the second column, the box, Jake was put on a two-week quarantine at Wilcox Residence because he didn't have a, a current rabies shot. State law permits animal control officers to allow home quaranties in cases where a dog bites occur on the owner's property. Well, wait a second, if we were so concerned as a community about mitigating and, you know, safety and stuff, this happened a year later, why wasn't, why isn't the same rule being applied?
Because when it's?
And again, that's a consistency thing, and I totally respect the no back and forth, I'm totally, I'm going to live to it.
You're not correct, I just want to make that for the record.
So then we can, if we go over to page eight, the question was asked if, if there was like a panel to decide if Jake, I believe is the dog's name, should be deemed vicious, it would be something that would be, you know, certainly considerate, is how it's quoted. Well, wait a second, we just had a dog bite a year before, that the dog is still in doggy jail, that's still in litigation, this happened one year later, and it's handled completely different, completely different. So if we go to page nine. So again, there is a mention of a June 28 email thread that goes between George Law, the Code of Ethics and Conduct Chairman, as well as the attorney to Joe Kelly, Olson, the town engineer, that there were discussions. I guess who wasn't kept in the loop on that one? That would be me. So, again, that name not in, in the thread. And again, if I was looking to be transparent and make sure that things were done, especially knowing how people were watching me with a microscope, I would tend to go overboard to make sure that people were kept in the loop, here's what's going on, and everything else. We're in the home stretch, guys, very close. Let's see. On the last page, page 10, there had been previous discussions about how the case had to make its way through the system, but yet, in another case, very similar, again, a zoning issue, the town right away jumped in, the town's attorney was like, hey, we've got to be able to file this right now. You know, if we can't file this, how does that look? It looks like anybody can do what they want. I'm paraphrasing, of course. But again, there's no consistency, there's no consistency. What are the mitigating circumstances on why they are handled so differently? You know, how can one, an injunction be filed against one and not the other? And it's, it just, to me, it's just like, wait a minute. And, just to wrap things up, tonight before I came in, I was on Facebook, and in the Portland community, you know, somebody had posted a comment, and somebody's like, well, it's Portland, it's always been this way. And then, you know, the inevitable, well, it's never going to change, you know what? I think we deserve better. Maybe I'm wrong, I know I deserve better, I know I want my money well-spent, I know I want to be treated fairly, I want to see my neighbors treated fairly. So the reason for this fabulous handout is not just for me to read to you, it's for you all to actually read it, take a look at it, ask questions, because when there's a complaint that's brought up to a Code of Ethics and Conduct, and nothing happens to it, you know, it's, it's time that a light needs to be shined on us. If we can have a committee look at a splash pad, a splash pad, really? We have a committee for a dog park? That, to me, is ludicrous. You know, there's talks of a committee, when we have a dog that's been in doggy jail for how long? I mean, come on, don't we deserve better? Don't we deserve better as a community? And I think it's time to get a group together, committee, forum, whatever you want to call it, we need to look at our Code of Ethics and Conduct, Code of Ethics and Conduct, and make sure that it's up to date, and make sure that the people are getting the training that they should, and not, when I say the training that they should, it's not just employees, it'd be all of the selectmen. the selectmen, and it would be anybody who's doing town, uh, business closely, like our lawyer would have to go through it. It's just, it's common practice. And I think this needs to come about sooner than later. Because lawsuits are expensive, they're embarrassing, they ruin our brand name as a community, just doesn't look good. So, with that, I shall jump off my perch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rutter?
Cuz it wasn't such a beautiful handout. Okay. So, I live on 32 East Main Street, and the only, you don't have my dog issue on here. So the reason that your dog issues are different is for one, one dog attacked a person, that's treated different than a dog who attacks another dog. So that's why they're treated different, for one. So that's where we get with dogs.
Are you the dog catcher?
No, no, no. I'm a dog, I'm, I'm a owner of a pet.
Through the chair, Mr. Rutter, through the chair.
Oh, through the chair. I'm, I'm a, I'm a dog owner who's being sued, who-
Mr. Rutter?
Oh, sorry, who supposedly had a dog attack. My dog supposedly had two do- two dog fights within a month. Both dogs on my property. I got a ticket, I fought them both, I beat them all, and I'm still being sued by the lady who says my dog did this. So again, when it comes to all these issues, you have to look at each individual as an individual issue, because my issue is an individual issue, and I'm getting beat up on the other side. Okay, so, and when it comes to like, property, no property exactly the same, so you have to treat every building property as its own individual building issue, and not as a group. Because I do site work for a living, and that's what I do. So you can't just say that this property has to be treated the same as the other property, because each property is designed differently, and when somebody has a property and they wanna do something on, all their issues have to be done. I also had an issue with my shed, that, about property lines on my shed, and I had to go to the town for months about getting it designed the way I needed it to suit my purposes and not the town's purposes. But again, there's a process. Each building has to be judged separately on its own merit. And not, and not come to-
You don't have the floor, you don't have the floor right now?
So, so when we do this-
Thank you.
When we do this, everything has to be treated as its own individual. So we should not compare apples to oranges, and we need to compare each individual as an individual. And not try to say, well, this was done one way, so it can't be treated the same way.
Thank you.
Well-
Thank you. Mr. Satajake, can you keep your comments to a brief?
Uh, just brief, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the Board of Select, we mentioned they received the report. Did you all receive the report and read it? Did you happen to see it?
Yeah.
What was the reason for the driveway being left there? And, 200 feet, what, what was the reasoning for it?
From what I recall, what I recall, the town engineer's position, or the last position, was that would be less detrimental than it would have been.
On what, on what basis did he come up with that, though?
That's on accurate, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, he wrote it, but how, what calculations did he use?
And Mrs. Hoy, also, because it would have affected her property, she agreed with the decision.
Yeah, but Melissa wasn't, uh, involved with that.
Didn't affect her, didn't affect your property.
It affects-
It's what the engineer said, Mr. Satajake, that's what I'm saying.
But, but, no, I have a little bit more here. So you got these re- uh, reports, uh, from the, from the engineer, but, um, you know, I did mention I was up here earlier, um, a few months ago, saying that there was water coming to the right side of the house, and that wasn't addressed, so I would ask the Board of Selectmen to revisit his report and, um, consider, uh, the high probability that it's incomplete. Uh, because this is clear and obvious hazard and peril coming down, uh, unfortunately. And I would ask you to take a second look, uh, because the situation is just gonna cycle, and, um, he's, you know, looking to sell that house, and the next owner is, we're gonna be right back here, and I'll be back here every, um, hopefully not, but, uh, up here to address it. And I would ask you if you would kindly look at that and, um, ask why, wh- how did you not see this water? It's eroded, you can see it clear as a casual observation. How, how does the engineer not notice this? Kelly reconfigured the property, he put up, uh, P rocks and cinder blocks to block that water, it's obvious to see, and it goes down towards, down a hill, towards his house, and comes down the hill and back into our house. And it's just as much water, it's white water, and, um, this issue's gonna continue. And I would ask just to, uh, you know, uh, please take a second look at that, because it's important. Um, thank you.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
I honestly, I recall you making a comment, I apologize, but-
Well, that's okay.
You mean right side, you mean if I'm walking down the street at your house?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So the water was behind, where there's drainage designed to pick it up. But since he paved that driveway, um, he had built up a temporary, um, you know, uh, wall block, uh, berm to move a lot, a lot of that water, uh, down towards his house, and it goes through the woods, you can't see it. It goes right off his yard, and you wouldn't even notice it if you didn't really know it was there, or if you went up there when it was a good amount of rain. Uh, but you'd have to, uh, you can see, you know, the path of it, and, and, and it has to be looked at, and I would just ask that. Uh, you looked at the report, I know, uh, Mr. Jagmanson's a reputable engineer, but this was not, uh, looked at. Um, and also, you know, we still don't know about that ditch being filled in. It is covered with grass and landscape, so it looks nice, but the measurement, the height of it, does not look the same as when he dug it out, so. Um, it's one thing to get a, a report, um, but, um, I, I had asked Mr. Barrett that we take another look so I can point these things out to, we were not invited. Mr. Barrett sent this letter to us, we're taxpayers, and he asked if we had any questions and concerns, and, and the answer is yes.
I had shared with you what he had issued.
Well, it's, it's to my email-
It was a letter, I-
And, and I received it, and-
I sent it to you and to Mrs. Gary or Satajake. He did not send it to you. He issued his-
Right, okay, so-
So I shared it with you.
You shared it, and, okay, so, it says, if you have any questions or concerns, to contact him. And I certainly, and there is obvious things to be looked at yet, and, um, I would ask that, that does not get completed, signed off, or, um, com- deemed as complying with, um, till it's looked into in more detail? Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
While you're up there. Are you getting water in your basement from this?
We, we do get water, yeah.
And then, when it comes, when it comes down the right side of your house, where does it end up going? I know where your house is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Does it go down to Collins Hill Road, and?
Yes, yes, it goes, uh, over, there's a big rock on the right side.
Where do you think the water originates, this path to the right, do you refer to-
Oh, oh, yeah, um, just right at the beginning of where that driveway opens up to a parking area where Kelly is, um, it created erosion right through some shrubs, bushes, and, uh, there's a high point going up to, uh, Favalli's driveway, and it all pulls up there, and then it, uh, we're at the low point, and it's created a, an erosion path down, if you're looking up at our house to the right side, you can see the, uh, incline of Favalli's driveway, so wherever the high spot is, back in those woods, that's where that water comes down, and-
You think it's coming from the golf course, originating?
Well, it's the same water that was there all along, so we, we're getting some of the same drainage, uh, that is designed to pick up, and then it's, some of it's pushed off to the right side. So it's, you know, uh, three quarters, uh, you know, quarter less of the water's coming down where the drainage is designed, or half, or whatever it is, but it's split. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Move on to old business. Proposed land swap with Exchange Club of Portland. I did go back to the, um, deed we received, let me back up just a minute. The land that they want to swap includes land that was given to the town by the Proudt family. And I did get the deed associated with that, and did not see that there was any restrictions on the land. So I just wanted to report that.
Okay.
Yes, I'm glad.
So-
Thank you.
I just have the one copy.
Susan, you're saying the Prouds gave the land to the Exchange Club?
No, to the Town of Portland.
Oh.
Without, without any restrictions.
Oh. That we're gonna give to the Exchange Club.
Correct, correct. I did not look up the Exchange Club's land, cuz that, some of that was donated to them, Rick, back in the day.
Okay. Now, I, I misworded what I was saying.
Okay.
Yeah, you answered it, so.
Strickland parcel transferred 1969 to the Exchange Club of Portland. Land transfer, um, came from the Proudt family to the town. And is there a date on that, then, on that deed?
There is, but I would say we, we would have to go back further to make sure there was no other restrictions.
Paula did go back a bit, but she, she didn't give me that copy, but we certainly could do that.
I, I would definitely, just to make sure there isn't something-
Yeah.
-pokey in it, that shows a wrench.
Um, so, one suggestion was that we may wanna do a site visit, so you can see, rather than just on the paper, what we're talking about. The other thought that I had was in terms of the proposal, whether the town wants to, um, retain the road. The way this map was drawn, drawn up, the road that's there, I should call it a driveway, the access drive into the property, the Exchange Club property, the proposal was that all of that would be given to the Exchange Club. I'm-
Wait.
If you look at this map, I have a couple copies of it.
I can pull over there.
Oh, okay.
This, let me just make sure.
Thank you. So what was proposed on this map is that everything from, I guess it would be east of this line would go to the Exchange Club. And the Town of Portland currently owns, I believe, this strip here.
I think we own it.
The Town of Portland, right, Rick?
I think we own it here.
Yes.
So they're kinda using our land?
Yes. That I'm, that I understand, but I'm saying, maybe we wanna cut it here as opposed to over here. And get them access to the road.
And then what about this part of the road?
This, um, let's see-
Because this is their land, right?
Yes, and they were giving us an easement here, we could give them an easement there, formal easement.
Yeah, but we could, we could give them this strip, and instead of this just being the triangle, have it come right down. That way they still have all this land for the rides and things, the way they run the fair.
And they own this now.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep. They're, I don't think they're supposed to give up the driveway, I don't think that would be, uh-
I'm not a, I'm not asking that they give that up, then, but we could get an easement from them for us, right?
Yes, that's what I said, yes.
This is our land.
Yes.
And I'm saying-
Yeah.
Let's think about, do you wanna give that to them, or do you wanna retain this part and give them an easement for this part, they give us an easement for this part?
I could give you both scenarios, I think it's, either way it's good if the town keeps it, or if we give it and take the easement, that would be just as good, because we know the fair still uses it heavily, parking and all sorts of activities with the festival. So, you could go either way on that one.
Right.
As long as the easement's written the way you guys want.
I haven't seen that.
I think easements are fine, easements are, really, the devil's in the detail of the easement.
Yeah, and Jim and I were talking about the concept, you know, if you hadn't left it the way it was in-
Hang on a second. Anybody, you guys can come up here if you want, this is, okay, just in case you wanted to see what I'm talking about.
If you wanna see what we're talking about.
If you wanted to leave it, then just, we could split off, you know, they relocated this gate to this location, we create our own entry over here.
I think that's a game changer for them, I think you'd have to start paying the exchange- I mean, that, really, there's, that, I don't think that's what the Exchange Club proposed, and I think that's a, that would, I think, be very different than what-
Well, as long as they may have access here, maybe their gate could be here, we just need to have-
Yeah, I'm just saying, right, remove the gate over there.
Egress, here.
Well, you could still move the gate and retain ownership, which is all right, an easement, the devil's in the easement.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, but the goal is, you know, we could enter from this spot rather than having to enter higher up, you just enter our property from here, that we don't, I don't care either way about the road. I mean, we could decide-
Honestly, I think eventually it'll be a straight line, there is already an access here, and it wouldn't be, it would be very, very, and it would function well.
But whichever way, I mean, just utilize whatever-
That's why I wanted to go there and see how, how wet it is and everything in here, but it would seem-
It's pretty wet right here.
I know in there it is, but it's, it'd make sense, Ben, to just, like, if we wanted to have access over to the riverfront, just kinda come in and-
That's what we were thinking, is if this is the part where you- You gotta avoid the puddle, you know, the low spot, whatever you wanna call it.
A little bigger than a puddle.
This gate is hot.
I, I remember playing hockey on it.
Yeah, no, exactly, but you, whatever is done has to function, physically function. But there is a value to, I, I think the big issue is the gate, that if we open that gate up, we're gonna have issues, I think, in the long term.
Well, that's why I say, if you move the gate a little bit-
Like, Susan's going to bring it to us in the morning every day.
Yes, yes, it is, you're right, this is the gate here.
If we, if we hop off, and right, if we-
If we're gonna get given this property, right, if that's part of the exchange, if we hop off, now they can keep the gate where they would prefer.
Or closer where they prefer, from their perspective.
The Exchange Club should just do something to that effect, and the town goes straight, and then they're still getting off.
Right, yes.
Um, and that protects the farmers to an extent out back, and then the town maybe puts boulders to get to where they wanna go, and you don't wanna open up a gate wide open.
No, 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 agreed, we all agree.
No, we can stay closed, the gate we would put in would be the one we could open.
Yeah, so I think, either way the devil's, it doesn't matter what land you give, what land you take, as long as the easements are in the, the right way.
Okay.
Not a bad idea, though, to go take a look at it, and see exactly where the wetland is, and now, given all the rain's a good time.
Yeah, no, it's really-
But if we're not gonna use this road, then I think it should go to the Exchange Club.
I, I'm okay with that going to the Exchange.
Yeah. And then, if we get an easement over this piece, we can always use that road.
Correct.
But if, if it's more convenient to come in this way and the terrain allows it, then if you wanna do a kayak launch there, or canoe launch, it's quicker to get there. If you look at the map that I think Lou has-
Bring that up for-
Yeah, if you're, if this one, I would write two things, or I-
Yeah, hold on.
That's in there.
You're gonna want, I, um, from the Exchange Club, number one, you're gonna want, no matter what happens, you're gonna want access to any and all telephone poles-
Yep.
-in the future, 'cause then, uh, you know, near the-
That's for electricity?
Yeah, near the, not, obviously, the middle, they're locked.
Right.
Um, but maybe, maybe call them out, you, there's like, there's, all the poles are numbered.
We can go get the numbers, yeah.
I would call out all the poles, so you have that.
By name, by number.
The biggest thing is gonna be, as long as the Exchange Club's fine with, you're increasing the legal, like George was saying, you're increasing the legal right to cross over, so that's a big change. So as long as they're okay with future changes, that's, you're getting a, a big gift out of that to get in, so, by giving them the land, I think that's pretty fair.
And it gets them out of having, use on a land that we own.
We still want the easement to use this in case we needed to.
Yeah, I think the easement would be the whole thing, wouldn't it?
Yes, yes, you want it for future fire truck access, you want it for, you know-
So you wanna keep the easement-
Yes.
-as presented here?
Yes.
Okay.
But, you're, you're gonna wanna get off earlier, I think, to move the gate, but the gate issue has to be somehow addressed, because if you open that up, you're gonna, it's gonna be a big, you know-
Well, they're gate now, it's, we can just open it again.
Yes.
You just relocate it, so it protects them, and we have the-
But, but even opening the gate-
Well, even if the gate stays where it is, and you own this piece of property, that gets you to this piece of property.
There's not enough room for this, though.
No, there is, no, up here, you'd have to come up from-
He, he has to see it.
Well, in, in all fairness, you could, just go here, he, there is just enough to get it, but-
This, this piece right here is right near the road.
Yeah, but they don't want-
And this is in a little bit. So this probably goes past this Exchange Club, it's right about there, and goes-
Which piece you talking about, you know?
Well, this piece of property, right here.
No, move over one.
This is the Exchange.
Right there, that's where we are.
This is, this is here.
Yes.
Okay, so if you get in here, which is this triangle over here, this little piece up here, uh, if you can access this, you go in, and the town property's right there.
Correct.
Your, your picture is different than the map.
Well, yeah, I know, but if you're, this is all open, right? And here's the gate.
Yeah.
And if you're coming here, this is probably wide enough for a driveway.
It is, but.
One lane, though, right?
No, no, there's plenty there. He's right, but that's not how, it wouldn't function.
It's got big, big concrete blocks here, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, you'd, you'd probably still need to do some type of blocking for the driveway, so people couldn't go north.
Well, that's, yeah, that's where you're gonna run into, whatever the town opens up, you have to keep in mind, you've now opened it up for all the big trucks to go back to the back, you have to figure out a way to.
Right, you gotta block that.
Oh, sooner or later, big blocks, whatever, 'cause they are gonna, they're gonna throw around.
Right.
Without a doubt, it's not the quad, the dirt bike, it's the big trucks from out of town, and, you know, it.
You're still gonna stuff that down anyway.
Yeah.
Big blocks.
But, you know, we have to make sure, I think, D E E P, you find the big rocks out there. You're not, the plug plane's a big issue, even fence posts, they get all fired up.
Yeah.
So we have to be careful what we do here.
Have a natural.
And we also, right, we don't wanna open it up, I'm telling you, if we open it up, big issues for everybody.
This new neighbor, he must have bought.
No, no, we know we have to.
This, this is on the.
I have a table down right here.
This is.
He must have bought this.
Many times.
Put up a fence and planted grass.
All manner of vehicles already in there.
Wright's Farm, that's George Purdo.
So it's not like we'd be doing something new, they're, they're already in.
He bought this.
Right. But if you don't leave the gate open. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing.
Yeah, but his property is at the top of the Exchange property, so I'm guessing that if you were here, and you went into our property and went left, you still would be like here, you still could access.
But I don't think Reposo owns that.
And you're saying Trion Street goes through there.
Yeah, and that's another potential, uh, if the property's not, if the road is not an abandoned road.
The Trion Road is actually not that bad, we had to put blocks, somebody put blocks there, I don't know.
I think it might have been this owner.
Yeah, well, that just seems to trust it.
Somebody put, that could be.
Yeah, it looks like it goes right through Trion Street, oh, there it is, that little white line, so.
It does, it does. It does.
Boy, those property owners would be too happy if they.
That's how life works, yeah. But, once again, whatever is proposed needs to somehow function for everybody, if we just start opening things up, that's where the issue is, I think.
But as far as the land is concerned, is there any other notes, access to all light poles nearby along here? Um, and keep the easement as presented on the map.
Yeah, it would be.
We're in favor of that.
It would be, whatever the language is, obviously, whatever you say.
I have to look at the language of the easement, I haven't seen it.
Right.
And we would also.
Would have to.
Where's in Georgia.
I would say you, you wanna flip the language, so whatever they're giving us, obviously, we're giving them.
Right.
And, because they're giving a big gift to get you in there, so that's.
Yes, that's right. That's important to us.
Do we have to have anything in the easement that gives us the right to take off another driveway off of that? To have basically another cut in that?
No, not on your own land, so.
Well, remember, this driveway would be on their land, right, so we would need to have rights in.
This, yes, but this is your, but we're up this order of the driveway.
So you could do this, but these.
You could do anything you want, you want.
No, I understood, I'm talking about something that would say that we would have rights, because right now this is blocked off, so that would have to be opened up for us to put a driveway there. So it would be, we'd have to change structure that's on their property, 'cause they have.
Well, if the line's drawn accurately, you, you now would take over the feds here, see, the feds, it would be on the town's land, they could take over the feds.
I, I guess we just wanna make sure, yeah, we just wanna make sure.
I think if you went through that, the day you'd be open to here, I don't know if it apps like that, I don't know if we have to look.
Absolutely, that's, that is.
As long as, as long as when we come out of it, we have the right, regardless of exactly where that line is officially drawn on the.
Yeah, you could write that in.
I would say, we're gonna have, like, somebody other than George Lawb representing the town, right?
Yeah, I haven't.
Because George is representing the Exchange.
Yeah, I haven't given it to anybody, 'cause I wanted to get your feedback and what you want, before we proceed.
My advice, don't iron out all these little details, then you turn over.
Right.
Just one last review, they both check for both sides, they make sure everybody's happy, and you don't waste money back. Figure out what both sides want.
I wonder, Ben, if we were to own this, give them an easement, Exchange Club then takes our road, and they give us.
I think the Exchange Club is full to give that frontage up.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you wanna do something off your own property, it's gonna be easier than an easement.
You can, no, no, you have this easement, you're gonna have the easement for the whole thing, and you're now gonna own this, you can just go straight. They, they can never prevent you. And you put that in the, put that in the language.
Yeah.
It just seems cumbersome to have two different easements on essentially the same road.
It's not two different easements.
No, what Susan was saying, I was just saying either.
What you're saying is keep it the way it is, okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, either, either we own the road and give them an easement, or they own the road and give us an easement. Not, you know, we own this part, and give them, and they own that part, and give us.
And frankly, I think that the club is gonna use this more than we.
Right.
Will probably use this.
But you never know, it's, it's a nice one for you guys, for fire department to get in, but so you have all that right.
You don't know.
Yeah, if you keep it consistent, the nice thing, too, is you have one entity that's responsible for maintaining it consistently, right? You don't have.
Except when you have an easement, and you're the one using it, you're responsible, or you're co-responsible. 'Cause that's come up in other instances, where there's an easement for back property, and the back property is saying they don't own it, so they're not gonna take care of it, they're not gonna plow it, they're not gonna repair it, and the answer was, oh, yes, you are, because you're the people that are using it, and the law says you have to take care of it, even though you don't own it, you have that right to use it, and thereby you have the right to take care of it.
So maybe we should be talking to the Exchange Club about.
Well, yeah, you'd almost have to have an agreement as to how, the town goes in here, and we do help.
I, I would say, I, well, I would say be careful.
It's to our best interest. But we, I'm just telling you what we do do.
Yeah, exactly, no, I would, I'm just, I'm talking over here, saying, yeah, be careful how, whoever uses it the most is gonna maintain it. For example, when the fair happens, we grade, you know, it gets graded every year, when the town, if they start having a thousand cars in, they, they know they're gonna have to grade out.
And we'd have to take care of it.
Exactly, so it's gotta function, so whoever's using it, it needs to function.
We need to put that in writing, I guess.
I think it, I believe there'll, there'll be a generic language in there, where, you know, the, the, there, I would be, but yes.
Then we're gonna need the easement language.
Everybody knows there should be some language, yes.
Just so they're not pointing.
For example, for example, if the town decides to go straight, they're not gonna ever be able to hold, the Exchange Club can't hold the town responsible for all the maintenance up here. If the town chooses to just go straight in the future, they're off the hook for everything up here, as far as me.
But we'll probably help them anyway, because it's the Portland Fair, they will help them.
But if push came to shove, you legally.
Mutual.
Mutually.
Right, and, 'cause we don't wanna put the town in a position that is.
You know, frankly, these properties can transact, too.
Yes.
You can't say that the town will forever and ever and ever own this, or the Exchange Club will forever and ever own this, there could be.
Well, that's true.
You know, there's no reason you, they, they're not, they're free to sell their property, so you wanna make sure that easement goes with the land.
We gotta make sure that that easement, yeah.
And is to everybody's fair advantage.
Well, Susan, too, you could have, I guess you could have a meeting with Frank and, you know, Jim Hill.
Yeah, sure, I have talked to him.
You could just hammer it out, whatever.
I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with the way this is drawn, I think that you don't have problems with it, it sounds like it's okay. But what we need to make sure is that the easement language is reviewed, which I don't think we have right now. And then also, we wanna make certain, as Ben said, that there's access to all the telephone poles for the town of Portland, and, um, the easement would be as presented here, whereby this property will own the entire road, and the easement would be given to the town of Portland.
You're gonna wanna, well, if the Exchange's fine, you're gonna wanna add the deed and property reference of this one also being able to pull power on that.
Right.
As long as the Exchange Club, I mean, there's, I think the town's giving up, you know, a chunk of land here, but we're also getting rid of the liability.
Right.
The town, I think, is gaining something equal in value, so I.
Doing what is already happening, you could say, right, Ben?
I look at it from both sides, you know, you get, it's gotta be good for the town, and it's gotta be, you know, fair for the Exchange Club, I think this is a win.
And if we can get to the river, and if we can still use the skating area.
Yeah.
And access to the skating area, which is here, right.
Which we technically don't have until we do this.
Right, right, right. But it's good that we're working together on all this, because, you know, even though it's funky land, it's an asset.
It is.
It's like, you know, the fair was.
Right.
Successful, it's, it's a feel-good event.
And I just wanna show you the.
Everybody's kinda works together.
I think I showed this to you last time, and that is the Wright Farm, W R I G H T, has purchased, got this from Carl Johnson, has purchased all that is in green. So here we have Meadow Road, yes, Purdo and Jim Halas.
Jim Halas, from the newspaper?
That's on the record.
Hmm.
So.
So from here, up here.
All the green stuff, yeah.
And that's the, right, the driveway, and where's the Exchange Club? Oh, right here, here's the exchange land, right?
Yes, here's the road we're talking about.
They're buying up the.
All this, and then I believe he bought Reposo, which is right here, and this is the town land. Ten and twenty-seven is the town's.
I was curious on how the town can get this land.
We exchanged it, we did a swap with the Portland Fishing Game, we gave them some land to the Pecosette Meadows. And it was very similar, we gave them a lot more land in Pecosette Meadows than one point two five acres, but the town wanted to have the frontage here, and Pecosette, it's, it's all wet, and they, they're hunting fish there. So that's how we got it.
He's starting off quite a bit of.
Yes.
Yeah, what can he do with that property? Yeah, what kind of restrictions?
Well, he used to run, like, the.
Farming?
Old Maids Farm on, uh, Organic Farm. And I don't know what he did, if he still owns that property, he's not really farming it anymore. And he's an attorney.
I think the town, I think the city, the town, they bought it.
Glassmere.
Yeah, because the school is there.
Old Maids. Yeah, it's near there, but it's.
There's something back there, yeah.
It's on Nip, Nipsick Road.
No, Old Maids Lane.
Old Maids Lane.
Old Maids.
And you go down the end of it, and you turn left, and you're on Trion Street, and I think you come back south, and there's some houses that are considered Portland.
We have a fund of ours that lives right down there.
Yeah, they are.
They're not considered Portland, they are.
They are Portland, you're right, you're right.
I just wanna be clear, they pay, they are, they are considered.
But they.
They pay taxes to.
You can't get out of town without going to Glassmere, you get to town without.
Or own an all-terrain vehicle.
Oh, there you go.
Or a boat.
Yeah, or a boat.
They have, they have that. Okay, so what do you want me to do? Go back to George and tell him about the access to all the telephone poles? Um, and that would be accessed by the town's property, which would be identified as these twenty-seven and ten, right?
Yeah.
Keep the easement as they presented, we agree with that, and we wanna see the language for the easement.
And further discussion on the gate, I don't care what the outcome is, but I think the town is gonna open up a can of worms if we don't have something ironed out nicely that everybody likes, 'cause you don't wanna destroy the Exchange Club property.
Well, yeah, they don't want people, right?
I don't think any, I don't wanna speak for any landowner in the rear, but I, I would find it hard to believe any.
Everybody see everything?
Yeah, and I think we wanna make sure we have language that we can put a driveway off on the lower street.
Yeah, add that in, but I think that goes without saying, you own the land off the side.
It's more a matter of, depending on how the final easement is drawn, if we have to change or rearrange where their blocks are, if they're on their property, we wanna make sure we have the ability to do that.
You know, when you look at what has occurred, I know you talked about the skating area, well, we kinda really can't get to, well, they use our property.
Correct.
All the time, so it's kinda, we kinda both.
When you say that, which, how do you wear it?
Well, yeah.
No, really, yeah.
Speaking as a selectman.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, they, and, and it's been mutual, and it's been great, and it works.
Yeah, so it's not, it's been mutual.
It works until it doesn't work.
Correct, and this, well, it works until somebody gets hurt, and this cleans it up, I think this gets the town out of a, you know, wearing a selectman hat, I, I think.
You're gonna have to go to a public hearing, gonna have to go to a town meeting, so the decision is really at the town meeting level, you're only gonna recommend.
Just to do the swap?
Yes, oh, and you don't want, first of all, you know, I don't want to be the deciding factor of it, none of us, anybody in the Exchange Club should not be the deciding factor.
But any town land has to go to a town.
Yes.
You're gonna sell town land, you're selling town land.
Yes, leave it up to the voters, and you know what? Put it out there what it is, and I don't think, I'd find it hard to believe that anybody had an issue, but you never know, it's day and age, people have issues.
They may present something we weren't aware of.
Yeah, that's true, we may learn something that we didn't know, but, and if anybody thinks of anything else, now's the time to keep having Susan add it, because you do it later, it's gonna cost lots of money anyways, start thinking.
And I'll have George draw this up first, and then we'll have it reviewed.
And, and ask him if he had any more, um, things that he thought.
Okay.
Wearing their hat, in case we don't like what he's, you know.
Any, any changes, additions or deletions.
Just say, this is what we've come up with so far, what do you have, and if everybody draws on some pages, and we're heading to a court.
Okay.
Well, not a demo, and I wanna go there and walk through.
Yeah, we gotta walk it, I, I wanna see how.
What do you guys wanna go down?
I'll bring my quads down. Rick and I are going there tomorrow.
We'll come from Trion Street, just work it out.
Twelve-thirty-ish?
We can do another walk.
Well, if, if, if all of us are gonna go, we probably have to post it.
You would.
Yeah.
But if you go just yourselves, you don't have to post it.
We just go separate. Lou and I are gonna go look at.
Two's okay.
Two's okay, three's okay.
Or three. Will we pour it out?
And I'll ask, um, the town clerk for any additional, we'll probably have to have a title search done on this anyway, but any additional info that the town clerk's office can give us, on the deed.
And I, I would say, just so we have no hiccups on, the Exchange Club should do the same.
Yes, oh, yeah.
We're taking a piece from theirs, I don't wanna take on some liability or anything else.
The ti, the title down here, they're all a little nebulous, 'cause there's not a lot of pins there, to decide where and what.
Well, now we have some, the Exchange Club's survey, it's all.
They move, they move with the tide.
Yeah.
I think they might float sometimes.
Okay, good.
Good.
There you go.
Does anybody out there have anything they wanted to add to that? More minds help. Did anybody out there have anything they wanted to add to that? More minds help.
Okay, so letter B.
Beautification.
Beautification. Michelle worked on a draft resolution, but that's all it is. It's just a draft. So we're not acting on this tonight. Put this back on the agenda again.
Which is this for them?
The green is going back on the agenda. Red, the pink. When Mr. Connolly came, he suggested that we do some additional improvements on our Main Street. And some of the things that are reflected in this draft is, it's recently been suggested by the Board of Selectmen that a town beautification committee be formed to evaluate feasibility for enhancement of properties within the area of the Town Center Village District and along Main Street. And whereas town beautification committee goals shall include, but aren't limited to, define town beautification standards, review the blight ordinance and determine how to strengthen it, consult with the Town Center Village District zoning regulations, design guidelines as created by the Village District Consultant, and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, investigate incentive programs for property owners to attractively maintain their properties and identify funding sources, gather information from residents, businesses, and town officials, and therefore it's resolved the Board of Selectmen per the charter, creates a town beautification steering committee with five members, two alternates, and resolves that, of course, they would follow Freedom of Information Law dealing with public agencies, and further resolve the committee shall continue to function until such time as all the work is completed, and at which time the committee will notify the selectmen and the board shall disband. You can think about this. We wanted to put something together for you. I don't know if you want to act on this tonight, but we wanted to see if we could proceed with some improvements. And the one thing that I think you need to also think about is the fact that there's going to be new sidewalks on Main Street in many of these areas. And we heard Mr. Connolly suggest that you move the sidewalks so that there'd be some parking, particularly for some properties that don't have land. And I'll also point out that maybe four years ago, Jeff Jacobson came up with a plan which was a modification of what is there now. And it would be more grass, but the parking would be parallel to Main Street and the entry would be one driveway. You would either park to the right or to the left. Still in the town right-of-way. But that was rejected by the board at that time. They didn't feel that it would address the needs that they were looking at at that point.
Would the parking be behind the driveway, behind the sidewalk? Or would the, would, in other words, would the sidewalk be adjacent to the road and now there would be parking, parallel parking closer to the houses?
No, not the way he designed it. The way he designed it is the parking would be in the right-of-way on the east side of the sidewalk.
Like it is now?
So the, the parking would not cross the sidewalk. What I'm a little concerned with these sidewalks is you're gonna have people crossing sidewalks.
Well, there are places where people do have driveways.
Yes, there are some.
And that would be crossing the sidewalk at the driveway location. That would be fine.
This is for about four properties. Do you remember that?
I don't think you want to have.
Were you on the board then?
I thought there was more like eight or nine.
House side sidewalk, like on the west side. You want the parking, you know, between the sidewalk and the street, not between the sidewalk and the front lawn or the house.
And that's what, that's the proposal.
That's what the proposal is.
Okay.
Now, ideally, if there's a large lot with a lot of frontage, it makes sense to go on the side of the property or in the back, like most properties do. But some of those properties are so narrow, they really don't have much space.
I believe in some of them too. I mean, how many, some of those houses, how many cars do they have? Are they really gonna fit parallel on the road in front of the property?
Well, some of them will fit behind.
I mean, yeah, obviously that's optimal is if they could go behind, but I'm saying that in a situation where they can't go behind and you have five cars, I don't think five cars are gonna fit the length of the house. I, I don't know.
The fives are easy. When you're talking about, a lot of these are four families and they're required to have two parking stalls. Well, I shouldn't say that in case they're one bedroom. If they're a two-bedroom, I believe it would be two stalls per unit.
Even a one-bedroom with a couple could live there, right?
But I think our zoning requires only one per bedroom.
Per bedroom?
I think so. So, I mean, so at the very least you have four and potentially eight on every, that we, have, it has to be addressed. It can't, so.
So some of them will probably be worked that way and others might be more.
Right, and there's one that doesn't even own enough land to get by their structure with a driveway. There physically isn't. And I think the biggest thing is you gotta involve the owners. And actually, I already ran into Bruce Morrison and he said he would be the first to volunteer to get on the group. I think he's in a port one. He owns two of the homes in that area.
It'd be even better if the owners want to do this.
Exactly. And I think, well, the last time, and I wasn't involved, so I can't speak for, but you correct me if I'm wrong, I think it got heated with some of the owners and it, it, it didn't work.
Right.
And I think, I think the goal is, let's make it work. So I think involvement upfront is good. So that was why I told Bruce, you know, I think this is coming down. Would you be interested in getting involved? And he said, absolutely. So, because he owns one of the long four families.
Would you be interested in helping too? You had some ideas.
Maybe I'll be the liaison from our board or something, but I, for the record, I own part of one of them on Main Street, which I want it to look good. I, that was one of the reasons I bought it. Is I'm one of those people, I'm not afraid to, you know.
Well, I think you understand the problem.
Right. There, there's a lot. It's, so if we, I think if we go at it in a very open, let's put everything on the table, can it work? How do we make it work? What do we have to do? Some are gonna be blatantly no. I think we had one, I don't, I'm not gonna get into names, but we had one property that was very adamant about not getting on board. I think that would, we gotta hopefully start. Well, I think we need to start there and figure out a nice way, because I think, I don't know, maybe I'm open, maybe I'm too naive, but I think in life, most people want to do the right thing and try to get to the finish line. But in all fairness, I did hear, you know, one of them's a person on a fixed income and just cannot do anything unless the town is helping. So, so these are all, you have to put everything on the table. So I think that's the right way. I don't think being a bull in a china shop is gonna get us anywhere except spending money.
No.
I think if we go in open-minded, I think we could probably get some results. So I would say that's my two cents.
Sounds good to me, Ben.
And I like the resolution as it stands right now. I think that sets up a committee. It has parameters of what the committee is supposed to do unless somebody has some other additions that, I mean, I think it's, it's global enough so that it does answer their job, their charge, unless there's something else we'd like to add.
I, I would say, open it up just in case. I think one of those property owners is an out-of-towner and could, if we could get he or she involved, I think we should maybe invite them to get on the committee because these are, I think that's how you get things done. It don't.
They could be ad hoc, but if you're forming a committee by charter, they have to be a registered voter.
Or property owner, depending on.
Not in the charter. For a committee.
Okay. See, that's why I asked, because there's one, I know.
They can be ad hoc or be, be a consultant or, you know.
Well, I would say we figure out some way, you don't want to alienate them right from the beginning. I would say if we could get that person.
No, no. I think you invite them all.
Yeah, if we could get, that person would be another great one because they have a very long frontage property.
Yes.
And that would be huge.
Yes.
Huge to get that person involved.
I agree.
So.
Is it an individual or a kind of a?
I believe so, but I don't, I think it's one person that owns it. But don't quote me. I'm going by just what I've heard over the years.
No, I think that's correct.
And so if that is the person, and I, I think the way, you just say we're getting a group.
When we've asked that person to do certain things, that person's been very cooperative, but we've never asked them to do anything like this.
And I think if you start with, hey, we're not trying to change anything tomorrow. We're trying to figure out how do we get there. We would, and I think people want to make their properties look nice, maybe, once again, maybe I'm being naive, but I think that's how we get there. Let's, in a good way, involve people.
And if they want you to enhance one, the other ones are gonna want to do the same.
Yeah, I, I agree. But, you know, obviously there's gonna be challenges. I know one of two, one or two cannot, so I don't know how that, those get addressed, but where there's a will, there's a way.
So what would you like to do?
Well, you said I can't change it, so there, you know, basically.
No, the, the charter requirements.
Yeah, so I, that was my two cents. Unless you can figure out a way to make them, like you said.
Non-voting member or something.
So we just add that and then we, you know, and, oh, maybe add a sentence also to include and take input from the property owners.
Sure.
So they feel part of the.
Where do you want to add?
I don't know. I think that's where you start. Obviously, the ones that don't want to be involved are gonna show up.
How about, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen pursuant to section four oh five five of the Portland Charter hereby creates a town beautification steering committee here and after the committee that will solicit input?
Involve.
That will involve.
I think you start there.
Local, involve property owners?
Yeah, in those areas, because there were a few areas.
In the Town Village District and along Main Street?
I think that's also.
Pretty broad.
Isn't Main Street still Village Districts?
Uh, some of it is, but not all of it.
Is that gas station where the other?
That's Village District.
So then maybe we just say Village District, because at this point, those are the, right?
But it doesn't include the parking that you were referring to, you know, from Spring Street to Co. Avenue. Doesn't include.
That's Village.
Village District ends, and I think, Russell?
Mary said the post office.
Yeah.
That's what I think.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think we changed something.
You don't, we don't, I, as far as I know, we don't require the same things that we're requiring of the downtown area that, say, you're beyond Strong's Avenue. You don't, you don't have to follow Town Village District.
Right, Strong's Avenue.
I, I thought it ended at the post office.
I thought it ended at our, I think, we went back and forth like five times.
Yeah, I don't know either specifically, but today Mary Dickinson had made, we were in a meeting up today, and she's mentioned that the town, Town Center is from the bridge to the post office.
That is the Town Center. The Village District is different. The Village District, I believe, goes, and I.
I know it was talked about then, but I didn't remember it being adopted. But what if we said that will involve property owners in the Town Village District and along?
And, and along Main Street.
Main Street. I mean, if people from upper Main Street want to get involved, come, come, because there's parking issues all along Main Street.
No, that's why, why don't we make it broad?
Right.
Involve property owners in question or, you know, because, I mean, the bottom line is we're, we're singling out certain areas and those are the.
Along Main Street. How about just along Main Street?
Including just Main Street. That covers everything.
Well.
It does.
As open as we can make it down to the areas that we're concerned about.
I think that works and then we can, yeah, I think that works.
So that will involve property owners along Main Street and consist of five regular members and two alternates.
So, how, just, just curious. So what includes along Main Street, like Main Street proper or, say, some of the abutting streets? Like what if you live on, I don't know, Co. Avenue, like fifty feet from Main Street?
That will involve property owners on Main Street?
I, I'm just asking a question.
I think it's on Main Street.
Yeah, focus it for now. Yeah, I would just try that first.
With Main Street at, with Main Street ownership.
Blighted properties on Co. or Strong or Millsack.
Main Street ownership.
Properties that are.
That'd be next step.
So for example, if somebody's.
Well, what was going through my mind is if I lived on Co. Avenue, I just had a, say, a real interest in that part of Main Street because I'd drive by it, walk by it all the time. Although I.
Main Street.
So keep in mind though, your last bullet.
I guess I wouldn't have any real skin in the game, but.
Your last bullet says gather information from residents, businesses, and town officials. They could fall under the general, I mean, by, by calling out the Main Street, it's making them feel more inclusive than your average resident. But the average resident still falls underneath the last bullet, so.
Well, involve property owners on Main Street. I think they have to have a Main Street address.
Okay.
I, I think that's, I think, yeah.
And consist of five regular members. I'll read it again. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen pursuant to section four zero five five of the Portland Charter hereby creates a town beautification steering committee here and after the committee that will involve property owners on Main Street and consists of five regular members and two alternates. And the rest remains the same. And you can change this anytime you want.
I just hate by narrowing it to Main Street because there may be other places where you wanted to fix, but it does at the top.
It does say gather information.
Yeah, so you know what? I guess we can alter anything in the future.
I think we want to call out that we're trying to work with people and that's our way of saying it.
Well, are you gonna keep?
It's not saying that they have to be Main Street owners to be on the committee. You can appoint anybody you want.
Oh, all right. Well, that's important because.
It just will involve, the committee will involve property owners on Main Street.
Oh, all right.
And consist of five regular members and two alternates.
Well, we, I don't, I personally believe you want to involve the property owners. For example.
But what if you don't get seven people to volunteer that own property on Main Street? You still want to have a committee?
Legally, you'd only need the five. You don't need the two alternates, but.
If you don't get five, if you get five.
Well, here's my thought process. If we want to make a change, you know, I'm just one of those people, let's put it out there. We're talking about a certain area. We want to clean up that certain area. I think you involve those certain property owners and you try to get, you try to get somewhere. And I think that's the more productive way. I'll give you an example. If somebody from, and I'll use Frank because he's the one, he happens to.
Which Frank? Yes.
He's the one, you know, organizing. He parks in front of his house, you know, so.
I've not been to Frank's house. I don't.
Yeah, so, you know, we have to be careful. You know, here we are, starting a committee to stop people from parking in front of the house. We're trying to figure out a better way to do it, and that's fine. But I think those are the people you want to involve. You don't want to involve people like you or me that may pull up in front of our garage and now somebody's telling us to go park somewhere else. I think, I think the, to get people on board, let's get those people together and try to come up with something that works. I, I don't know. Maybe I'm way off on this. You, for example, we get five people on Bartlett Street to go tell everybody on Main Street, there's no more parking in front of your house. I think we just started a war.
Yeah.
We got nowhere. I'm personally, I'm just trying to figure out a way to, all right, if there's seven properties that are the problem, get all seven.
What they're doing is trying to define beautification, review the blight ordinance, consult with the Village District zoning regs, investigate incentive programs, gather information. They don't really have any power to do anything. The Planning and Zoning Commission will make these determinations. And you, the Board of Selectmen, will determine if you're gonna spend any money to make changes. So what we want is to get input from these owners to help us.
So back to Ben though. Okay, so how do you want to word this to get those seven, say, property owners?
It's up, it's up to us. I will send, I can send this to, to all of the owners and ask them to.
Maybe we start with them, like.
That's where I'm gonna start. And if we can't fill the board, then.
Yeah, they're street, so let's go to them first.
Yeah, I like that idea.
But it's up to the Board of Selectmen. That's your power as to whom you appoint for boards and commissions.
So send a letter out.
You don't want to take that power away from yourselves. That's your job.
Well, we can shut, if we don't like, if we shut it down, we make a new one.
You can. I mean, that's what you're responsible.
We have that ability, you know.
You do.
I just think, I want to, I think we all want to make it look nicer. Everybody wants certain areas to look nicer. But we also don't want to spend a whole lot of money and waste a whole lot of time getting there. And I think if you involve the property owners from the get-go, get a platform going on a positive note, maybe we get somewhere. Maybe we don't. Maybe like Susan said, nobody volunteers and then we gotta come up with a different platform.
But I think they will.
But I mean, that's, that's a good effort on our part.
Correct.
At least attempt. And I think Frank will yea or nay cast to appreciate the fact that we at least made an effort.
Yeah, and I think, well, I think.
Maybe Frank will be on the committee.
But I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's okay to have one person from Bartlett Hill on it.
Oh, that's at least from Bartlett.
But the whole committee should be mostly the people that live on Main Street.
Right. And I think if we do that, and maybe I'm naive, I honestly believe if we do that, we can probably incite a change, especially if, for example, one of the owners says, well, I'd love to put grass and trees in, but I can't afford it. Well, then maybe all the residents say, you know what?
The other thing too, Ben, is a lot of these houses are gonna have new sidewalks in front of their house that they do not put out of their personal funds. It'll come out of taxpayer, state money, and local town money. So there's a very nice incentive right there. Those sidewalks, some of them are pretty bad.
Arguably, that would go to all the million bucks, million plus, because we got the state money too, so.
Right. I'm talking about that.
But I do, I do like Frank's idea. If there's gonna be a shift in the sidewalk, now's the time to talk about it.
Right.
And then saying, okay, like Susan said, use it as a, a gift. We're gonna shift the sidewalk. We're gonna put in new ones. In return, could you line up your cars here? You know?
Right.
That's a great start.
Yep.
We're trying to.
Or maybe neighbors could help each other and there'd be some parking that one neighbor would have that, that someone could share.
That gets complicated.
I know it does.
Let's start with the easy ones.
I'm trying to think. Nice.
But you never know. Start with the easy ones.
Yeah. Sure.
If you're gonna be driving across the sidewalk, remember the sidewalk's underneath the driveway or something. Be thicker.
Yes.
So before you put in the new driveway or new sidewalks, you should see where you want to put the parking so you don't put in a new sidewalk and start breaking it up soon as you put it in.
Hundred percent.
Absolutely right.
Yeah, that's why now's the time.
Yeah, now is the time. Because if you're designing the driveway, it's gotta be strong enough to support the trucks and cars that go over it.
I thought Frank had a, that was the first time I had ever heard that idea and I thought it was a wonderful idea because then it would actually solve some of the ones that can't go behind their house or on the side. So what? They've got two in front and one little spot or whatever on the right side, on the correct side of the sidewalk. That's, right now, they physically can't do that by shifting the sidewalk. I think it's big. I.
So then they would park between the sidewalk and the house?
If, if possible. Don't quote, quote me on anything. I mean, we really.
No, that's what you're suggesting and.
Right. As a group, we should get a map.
Yeah.
Draw this out, how it could actually function, and then make sure it functions and then try to get that master plan to work in a positive way. I think, and literally.
Now's the time to do it.
One at a time. Pluck them off the list. I think there's ways to do it.
Because you know, we have the engineered plans for the sidewalks so you can do the plan for the sidewalks on Main Street. Now's the time to do it.
Yeah.
And I think people like Frank would, I don't want to speak for Frank, but I think he, he's ready to buy a gas station and turn it into a parking lot. Maybe he's okay and the voters go in and say, you know, we'll pay for the trees. We'll pay for the grass. Just no more parking. You, clean this up because it really is, that's our front door. It's Main Street.
Yeah.
It, so.
Well, I kinda, I kinda heard that vibe at the Bartlett Hill Homeowners Association meeting last night.
They've been giving us input on that.
You know, the whole appearance when you come off the bridge.
And it's not just them. We all live here. I think we can all acknowledge, and that was one of the reasons I participated in, you know, I only own a third of one, but I participated for that reason. I'm like, if nothing's gonna get done, I'm gonna get to the finish line myself, one at a time.
Yeah.
Anybody want to make the motion to approve the resolution as, as stated?
Sure.
As I read it?
Yeah, so will.
Okay, by Lou?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Good.
I'd like to nominate Bruce Morrison.
Be on the committee.
Yeah.
Well, you've just.
He already volunteered. He's a property owner, so.
Are we on to that? We're not, well, why don't we do that under appointments to boards and commissions?
Oh, that is.
Seven C.
I'd like to nominate Bruce Morrison for the newly created Town Beautification Committee.
That's fine. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so that was Ben and Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. We have another appointment, I believe.
You want me to do it?
Yes.
Appoint David Rutter as an alternate to the. Appoint David Rutter as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second it.
So that was made by Rick and seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Congratulations and thank you for volunteering.
I think we got one more.
One more?
Yeah, I'll nominate Dave Murphy to the Dog Park, Dog Park Exploratory Committee.
I'll second that.
Who seconded it? Thank you, Jim. So now we have two members?
Wait, we never met him, you gotta.
All in favor, thank you.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
You're too busy taking the notes.
I know.
I know.
So, Anne Snow is also on the committee.
Yeah.
So we need three more, I think.
So I have a question for you with regards to that.
Yes.
You know, we've talked about Karen or ECO being on that committee, how would that work?
She could only be a staff to the committee, she doesn't live in town.
Okay, I figured that, so.
She would just provide information. Any other boards or commissions or committees? If not, we can move on to led, number eight, letter A, refunds of excess payments.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we refund twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents to Honda Lease Trust.
Second.
Seconded by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Status and committee reports. Ralph, do you have any updates for us?
Yeah, and I can't remember what I said in the last meeting, but I didn't know if I noted it, but they have hit an area of clay in part of the north side of the lot. So they're currently working out a remediation strategy on that. We haven't got the official number, it's going to be significant number, so we've already started looking at other changes to the park to try to accommodate the cost that'll go with that particular fix. So we've had a small change talked about for the entrance, which, which would be changing in nature, changing from a stone, stone walls that are the basis of it, of putting sloping, um, grass instead. And we also had a long conversation with regards to the type of structures. We originally got estimates with regards to the structures that would be built out by the construction company. We're looking at another solution as well, something we originally talked about, and so we're trying to get some of, some sort of a number from the, to, from the Rita instruction to see if they can work with that kind, vendor. It would be a cheaper solution, hopefully.
So you're saying possible reductions on the entrance and the buildings?
Yeah.
Keeping the overall functionality the same.
Yeah, nothing changes other than, yeah, the type.
Where'd you say the clay was, which portion?
The north, in front of the North Hill, you know where the North Hill is that they just hydro seeded?
Yeah.
In front of that, there is a strain of clay that runs through the whole area where they have parking and the pull-through. And they've gone down twelve feet and continue to find clay, so the idea of trying to remove it, you know, they've gone down twelve feet, they still haven't found the end of it. So we're talking about the, how you remediate that and deal with the, you know, how water is going to flow off of that, so. The discussion has been, what I think the solution is basically to put a membrane and put three-quarter inch stone across it. And, and then what you would do is change the nature of some of the, I think they had some additional piping that would be slit pipes to take the overflow off of there. So just changing how the drainage has to occur, because it's going to act differently, the water is going to act differently.
Right.
So that's what they've talked about.
Membrane's expensive.
I don't, I don't, and again, membrane may not be the right word, it's whatever they're putting against around the stone, I don't remember, they use that?
It's the right word.
Does it?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an expensive word, it's probably the right word. So hopefully there, there are altern, they, yeah.
I'd encourage the selectmen to go and do a site visit.
Just don't stand on the clay.
At the park?
Yeah, go take a look at what they're talking about.
And what they're doing right now is they're actually doing some of the regular draining on that side. They've diligently worked their way around the entire park and that's the last stretch of drains that they're landing right now. Actually, since we last met, the other, the other thing they did is they did tap in to water mains and now they have water pipes all the way back to where the splash pad will be. So they've completed that work, they tapped into the, our water, so that was completed as well. And the only other thing I guess is, we're currently working on finalizing, um, signature on the easement for the property owner on one of the adjacent properties where we want to remove a tree.
Temporary easement.
And, yeah, temporary easement, so that we, they don't plan to be on the property, but we just want to cover the situation if something lands on the property and they have to go on to.
Which one's real? Oh, one of the back ones.
No, it's not Mrs. Murphy.
No, next to Mrs. Murphy.
Next to her, yes.
So other than that, we've, they're, they're moving along, no stoppage. As long as the weather stays good, we're good.
Yeah, I've been seeing.
Should be another week before we have a hundred-year storm session.
Yeah.
They only get those a couple times a month, though, so.
Speaking of, did you see that house that stood in Florida?
Yeah.
Where everything else was devastated.
Yeah, yeah.
That was amazing, but, sorry, I'll talk.
There was, there was another one that emerged intact, but it was two properties over, so the house was, you know, still standing, but not where it started.
Just got a new lot?
Yeah.
That's awful.
EDC met last Tuesday. Jim, you were there.
Yeah.
Help me through this, I didn't bring my notes, but I think the big, biggest thing of the meeting was that Route sixty-six traffic.
Corridor study.
Corridor study and they, we've got a link to something like six hundred pages long, but it's, it's on the internet. And the concern at the meeting was that the study, it didn't seem very complete because they were referring to some things that were already done. Like the intersection of Payne Boulevard, Middle Hattam Road and Route sixty-six. So there was a little confusion at the meeting, but then a couple days later, I guess Mary or Elwyn got ahold of.
Sam Gold.
Sam Gold, and he said, no, this isn't really the final document, this is more.
He also said, because I have his email.
Go ahead, help me out.
That there's a summary of projects recommended in the nineteen ninety-eight study that have since been completed.
There you go, and that, that solved that question or issue, like, well, why are they talking about stuff that we already did?
Because they were referencing the last study.
Okay, and then the other thing they were talking about, there's a, I guess the end of the month, there's a CCM, there's some conference?
Yes, but before you move on, January fifteen would further, let's see, at this point, I would agree to delaying the due date for comments on the draft. Existing conditions report by a few weeks, but he did not agree to January fifteen.
Oh, he didn't?
No.
Okay, that was another big issue, that, that we will want, they, EDC wanted more time to review everything.
It sounds like he will, but not, not.
Originally, it was like November seventh or something. It was really short, less than a month.
But he doesn't list a date in his email.
Okay. So I suspect Mary will, or Elwyn will get in touch with him and they'll agree on some date.
Yes.
Yeah. But I guess now's the time to, you know, look at that stuff if you have, feel you have questions or input. You know, but he's not here to defend himself, but he's.
I'm just saying what I thought I meant.
Yeah, I mean, he, my take is he just is really bent on this sixty-six bypass. I'm not sure how practical that is, or, or that may take a lot longer time to evolve.
What's the charge of the study? In other words, what, what were we trying to achieve, Susan, what was this study?
It, it's a study of the traffic patterns and the ins and outs and the changes that would be, uh, good for the corridor. Particularly based on what we predict will happen, knowing what's happening now, what we predict will happen, and make it a safer road and make it a better road for commerce as well as businesses and so forth.
Yeah.
So it's traffic generated and Elwyn has an idea of going off the bridge and taking a right onto Wilcutt Street. And then going over to Airline Avenue and coming out, so you would bypass Main Street and that section of Marlboro Street.
For the through traffic?
For the through traffic.
And then he wants Marlboro Street to become more of a, to become a town road.
Local road.
A local road, probably a two-lane road to the center of town and then.
Did this, did this study include, um, a future traffic from Elm Crest site? Or no?
Well, they're aware of it.
I mean, it was mentioned, because I was, I remember being at the workshop and it was certainly highlighted when we talked about that area, that that was what was coming.
Right, I was just.
Well, what was, what was a little upsetting then is that they started so late, because I had asked that they start sooner because of that development. And that their input would have been helpful to the developer.
Exactly.
But it took them a couple years before they actually got the contract with Ty and Bond to do the study for a myriad of reasons. Mostly, um, the state was very slow in approving. So now I think it's, it's soon that the traffic certificate will be issued for that property, um, and they are not including a bypass.
Correct. Yeah, I was just thinking, big picture, if Elwyn was worried about traffic, or anybody for that matter. Potentially, you'd want to dump the residential out the rear somehow to his Wilcutt, I mean, that would cut potentially five hundred cars at rush hour. If you had two cars per apartment or what, I mean, that would be huge, sixty-six would.
That was having exit out of Elm Crest onto.
Yeah, but if, obviously, like Susan said, if that wasn't part of this, it's not part, but that would.
Not at this point, but, but they can certainly recommend that, the corridor study could recommend that, yeah.
Yeah, because that would, I mean, right now, we all know what sixty-six generates, we know what it does, and if you're trying to not congest it during the rush hour times, well, a bunch of residents all coming out at the same time. It's not going to be, I think the businesses are going to be throughout the whole day, I think that's what, you, you know, you own businesses, I think that'll be a steady traffic, not a rush.
Yeah.
Necessarily, but there's going to be a big rush at commute time.
Well, then they're, they talked at the meeting about the cut into, you know, Brainerd Place and there's going to be a light there. So now that's an additional light on Marlboro Street.
Flags is timed well.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there, there's some concerns, but I mean, it's got to be, I mean, um, and I don't think it's realistic, this is where I disagree with Elwyn just a little bit, is that I, I like the idea to bypass, but it's not realistic because. The Elm Crest is ready to be, or Brainerd Place is ready to be constructed, I mean, he's got to get approval from the state with the existing roads, or we're going to be looking at that property undeveloped for another five years.
Right, and in all fairness, the developer may not like that idea, because then he loses the traffic count for his businesses that he just is investing all this money, so.
Yeah.
It, there's, it's, there's two sides of it, so I'd be careful.
Well, I did bring that up at EDC, that, you know, maybe not everybody, especially the business community, might not be super excited about a bypass taking thirty percent of the traffic away from Marlboro Street.
Yeah.
Where the businesses are.
And that, that's a tough route, the Wilcutt to Airline.
Can you imagine Elwyn's car, the trailer truck?
I couldn't imagine that, you know, in my pickup truck.
Well, there'd be a spur off the bridge, I mean, he, Elwyn had a pretty grandiose idea, that they would create a, they would actually do a cut off the bridge, coming off the bridge.
Yeah, you'd have to redesign it, it couldn't be the way it is, it'd have to be all redesigned.
Yeah, yeah, so you'd have to do some work on the Aragoni Bridge too.
But you're still crossing over railroad track.
And there's a bit of a drop there.
They, they had the same problem with the, with the Route nine, where they want to take the lights off Route nine.
Yes.
Where they're supposed to be twenty-six feet above the bridge, above the railroad, and they were trying to cut over there where Pacific Marlboro Granite is and come over that by twenty-six feet. And then cut on to, uh, Route Palo Avenue. And like I told them, I drive a forty-six foot trailer, and with a dump truck, you try to make that turn, you'd be running over cars, trying to make that turn on to that little Dicofan Avenue. I mean, that, that, that last idea they had was crazy.
Well, I, the, the problem, I, the one problem I saw with that was you were crossing over the railroad still in Middletown, that idea, that, that was not resolved. Literally, if a train went by, it would shut down everything.
Yeah, well, they were talking about coming up twenty-six feet above that railroad crossing right there, I'm like, that's crazy.
That's, well, anything's doable, back to, back to Main Street, anything's doable, you throw enough at it.
Well, so that whole bypass plan needs, you know, needs some more work, and then you got to get the state involved in stuff.
And that's a lot of money in this, I think the state's in a tough spot, I think, you know, that's.
Elwyn continues to write those things.
But he, he's working on it, I mean, if, if he can pull it off, hats off to him.
Yeah, I understand the concept.
Yeah. But I don't think we should hold up Brainerd Place to, you know.
Well, I think that would be beyond hold up, I think that could possibly be detrimental, and if, you know, he got his zoning change, he's moving forward, he's investing in Portland, I don't think, that, that, that's not a, that's not a nice.
Right.
Nice thing to do, once we, we get on the same page.
But once the certificate is issued, that's it, until such time as additional changes can occur, and it can, I mean, none of this is permanent forever, it can be changed.
Right.
And based on, this corridor study is late in coming, if they had been able to do it a couple years ago, that might have been able to recommend additional changes, but it's a little bit late at this point. Okay, another committee report? I think that's it, public comment?
Congratulations, Dave.
Yes, and?
And Dave.
And Dave.
Hey, how'd you guys know who I was talking?
I wanted to make sure the other Dave was.
Uh, general informal discussion? I think we kind of had a little bit, do you want to add something?
I had a question, you know, as we proceed toward the budget and we kind of talked about engineering costs. Is there any way that we could, you know, I mean, we talked to Bob, I don't want to tie his hands, but let's say if an engineering cost is going to cost for a project ten thousand or more, or five thousand or more, whatever Bob thinks is a, is a good number. That three bids or three offers are looked at before an engineering company is secured?
Right now, the town engineer does do some of those jobs if they are even more than ten thousand, but we can certainly go out to bid for some of these projects. It will cost a little more to develop the specifications in some time, but we certainly can.
Where do we feel engineering, like, my beef was legal, your beef now is engineering, why do you feel engineering's getting expensive?
Well, I, I've seen some of the engineering costs on some of the projects we've done so far, and there are different engineering companies that have done them, and it seems like one engineering charges ten percent of the project, some charges twenty percent, some charges twenty-five percent.
Where does our guy go?
So I've seen that in different, a few different areas, and I'm just wondering if we're spending more money than we should, maybe we should look at three bids or three offers for a specific, and I say ten thousand, maybe that's too high, maybe that's too low, but I can just throw that out as a.
I like your idea, but then why can't we do that with legal also? When we anticipate the project going to be astronomical or even, even slightly over, say, five hundred dollars, why don't we do that?
Problem, problem is.
But I'm going to give you a flip, exactly, I'm going to, that's what I'm going to finish it.
You know what the problem is?
I know, I'm going to finish it, the problem, Susan, I'll finish it, the problem is, if we go down that road with legal or engineering, they're involved from the beginning, they both understand the town, if you don't like our engineer, you don't like our attorney, change firms. Is that kind of where you were going to go, Susan? I was being facetious when I said, why don't we do it to legal, because, and I'll tell you why, because you, you've opened up a can of worms, I, we either do it to, here's my take, if we're doing it to one, we're doing it to all, that's, so. If we're going down that road, we're going to go down that road for all vendors, otherwise, we're going to say, you know what, we like legal, or we don't like legal, or we like engineer, or we don't like engineer. If we're going down that road, we're gonna go down that road for all vendors, otherwise, we're gonna say, you know what, we like legal, or we don't like legal, or we like engineer, or we don't like engineer, you, you, you get into a relationship.
What we do do, though, is some of the ancillary type work, like for the pipeline issue, I got quotes from our town engineer who are doing a land survey, and then I think I got three other quotes. And we're going with the low quote, which is not our town engineer.
Yeah, which is fine, because, and that's fine, I don't mind stuff that's outside, they're normal, but for example, we hire a town engineer, and the only reason I'm using the example is you brought it up, you hire them to go over all our zoning issues, well, if there's a bigger zoning issue, or there's a bigger town issue, our roads, and we now have to re-fix breezy corners, drainage. No, I wanna fix, just fix, you know, I, but like Susan said, when you have other projects, those go out to bid, I, I don't know, and same with.
The grants, the grants should go out to bid, for example, when we got the two hundred thousand dollars for the planning of the Route seventeen project, we could have given it to the town engineer, but we didn't, we went out to bid on that. This Connecticut Connectivity Grant for the sidewalk on Main Street, we can't give that to the town engineer, that's gonna go out to bid, and it should. I mean, the sidewalk project that we're doing, we could have put that out to bid, we did not, but we could do that.
And in all fairness, there are many a time where we, like on legal, we don't go with the town attorney, we go with a specialist, and I think that Susan's given examples where, you know, certain ones where you know you can save money, it's a big project, there's grants, but that's different, I think you start messing with, we gotta be careful, so whatever we do, better be uniform.
But I think I know what, what your intent is, I think if you stick a dollar number to it, it may not always be the dollar figure, something less you may wanna also go out to bid.
Exactly.
I think if we're doing special projects and you know they're coming up, we should go out to bid if it's tangible. The difficulty with, with attorneys is it's not as tangible an item, but the topic is, so for, certainly for bonding, we use a different attorney. When we did the fixed assessment agreement, we got a different attorney for that, who has more talents in those areas and experience in certain areas, and we can do that for other projects. The day-to-day question about planning, zoning issues with an attorney, I mean, you can go out for another firm, you can go out to bid and get another firm if you want.
Well, I wouldn't want to do that for every daily business requirement, and I, and I think what you mentioned, any, maybe we could start there, any special projects?
Yes.
We should consider going out to bid, or at least getting offers from three, three engineers or three companies.
Yeah, I think that, where we've seen some disparity has been in some of those special project modes, right? I agree the other way, you gotta have that consistency in terms of the operation and the application of day-to-day business, but in the special projects, yeah.
For example, and to go back to what Ben was talking about, I haven't spent too much money on it yet, but I did send the information for the renegotiation of the Brownstone Exploration Discovery Park contract, and I sent it to Shipman and Goodwin, cause I think they have more experience in those kinds of contracts. So I haven't gotten in, into giving them everything yet, but I gave them all the information that we already had, and I think within the next few weeks, we need to go back to them and have them start maybe changing some of that language so that it reflects what we want, which we're not gonna get into, cause it's negotiating, but I think they, they present, they're not necessarily cheaper. But I think the quality of the product is something that we definitely have to keep in mind.
Well, that goes against what Luke's saying on the engineering.
Well, it depends on the special project.
Because you, you may get a better quality from one engineer versus another.
That's a good point.
So that, that completely contradicts where you, where you're going with it.
Well, doing a survey.
Well, I think you, I think you define that by a specification and make sure you get something that's qualified when you go out for bid, so I'm okay with that piece. With the, when it comes to the legal fees, I think you do have attorneys that specialize in houses specialized, so I think that's appropriate, but I think you're right, if you're gonna send it out for bid, then you're gonna make sure that you're clearly defining in the bid, the specification to get the right type of engineer, right? It's not always gonna be the lowest cost engineer you can get, it's gotta be the lowest cost engineer that's good expertise in what you're trying to do.
And I think, isn't that the reason we have our engineer firm? Don't we have faith in them? I, I'm not sure.
Yes, but I think for some of the special projects, it's healthy to go out to bid on, on, on those special projects.
Yeah.
And especially when they're grant-driven, because they typically want you to do that, they may give you a pass, like if steep becomes issued again, and we get a special project like we have, I think we send it out. I think it's tangible enough that you can bid those kinds of jobs, and I think that's beneficial for the business community as well as for the town. And sometimes with these special projects, you may want your town engineer to go out and inspect what the special engineer has done, and I found that to be very helpful.
Especially if you're taking low bidder.
Yeah.
So what you thought you were saving, you, back to the point, we trust our town engineer, obviously, otherwise we wouldn't have that firm, and I think that's an important message, for example, with the sidewalks, they're there every day.
But, but the new, the new money, we'll, we'll have to go out to bid on the Connecticut Connectivity Grant?
Yeah, no, no, I'm just, I'm giving you an example, that's, there's a value to driving by, knowing they're there every day.
They may want, I mean, they, they may come up with the best scenario.
Making sure we, we're getting what we're supposed to.
Yeah.
I mean, you go, you go with low bid, good luck, especially once you're covering concrete, you don't know what you get, everything looks good on top, so I would be, you know, just be careful.
Yes.
That's all.
Okay, good discussion. I have nothing on follow-up, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Sure, move.
Jim?
Second.
Seconded by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Do we refund the excess payments?
Just have a call.
Yes, we do. That was made by Jim and seconded by Ben.
Nice.